Done, like, the school board meetings are done. And Rick said I needed, we needed to talk about it and discuss that and make a decision as a group.
It's been done before, but it's not, and it's usually just a, that's a decision that, I guess, we talk about some things sometimes, it kind of digress into other areas, but, uh...
I mean, it is a publicly noticed meeting.
That's up to the superintendent and, and, I mean, it's up to us, ultimately, but I'd have to hear from Charlie what he wants us to do.
What do you think, Charlie?
Um, I mean, these are publicly noticed and it does not have to be televised on YouTube, but I think that was, that would be within the discretion of the superintendent. If the superintendent wished to put them on the regular YouTube channel, that is fine, but if not, that's also within the bounds. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be recorded and posted there.
I, um, I just didn't really get how it would be different from a board meeting.
We've had them over the years before. If you want to make a motion to have them televised, make a motion.
Well, I want, I want Rick to weigh in because he had a concern.
Well, I just want to, again, these are public meetings and, um, you know, whatever's discussed here, I didn't know if you're leaning towards live streaming or just putting it, the recording on YouTube.
I would hope she'd be leaning for putting the recording on there because you never know what's going to happen in a workshop.
Well, you never know in a board meeting, as we found out the last board meeting.
That's not too uncommon, but, I mean...
Well, I, you know, I'm fine with just putting it up there, but how soon after the meeting will it be put up there?
Well, it just came up this morning and we really haven't had a chance to research.
Oh, somebody brought it up, y'all two?
I brought it up in our meeting this morning.
No, no, Rick brought it up in our leadership meeting this morning and all we know is it hasn't been past practice recently.
Yeah.
So, we were planning on just doing some research and, uh, in my mind, the fact that they aren't, they probably aren't for a good reason, but, you know, I just don't know that right off the hand.
And this is for...
Yeah, but what's the good reason? I mean, it's...
I was not, I would have to look. Maybe we didn't years ago. I didn't know, Jane, but I thought it was all on...
And is this for our workshops? They're asking that our workshops be televised?
Please don't misunderstand me. It may be a really good idea. We just haven't had a chance to look into it.
I think the last thing we talked about in our meeting today was just kind of seeing what other districts are doing. Not that that determines what we do, but I'd like to know, is there, what is the reason we haven't been doing it?
Same here.
Yeah.
Perhaps the liability of, perhaps Charlie, Charlie needs to get a little time to look at the liability.
Yeah, I just assume we posted after the meeting for, until we, until we know more, we can just put it up after we're finished.
I'd like to...
I mean, as long as it's not days.
I'd like to start, if you could give me a, a chance to...
I don't think, yeah, it's recorded.
I wanted to talk about discipline and not videoing, but, I mean, can I talk about discipline now? I'm just...
All right, well, when we move, when we move into the discipline, so what we're saying now, are we tabling this or, and, and we're going to mull it over and think about it? Thomas will do his research, then we'll come back.
I think Charlie's going to do some research.
And Charlie will do attorney...
Yeah, but it's going to, a copy of the meeting will be put on our website, just not live.
Right, okay.
Correct?
Well, it's currently not being videoed, no ma'am.
Uh, you, Rick told me it was!
Okay, I thought it was videoed, but we, we just made the audio available.
We did the last one.
No, we need to make the video available of this meeting.
It has been my understanding that it was only audio. Talking with Mike 10 minutes, 15 minutes ago, he said he does have audio and video.
Good.
But it has never been put up, the workshops haven't been put up, so, uh...
Well, this one will need to be.
Probably never, I mean, I don't know.
I can't...
And we'll demonstrate our board etiquette.
If recordings are made, is our public record, if someone asks for them, they would have to be available to you.
Oh, sure, yes, yes. This is a public meeting and this is a public record.
Yeah, but I just don't think they ought to have to go through all that to see it.
Any minutes.
And so, and so now, it, it seems as if they're already being recorded, that they can be played later as opposed to live streaming.
Well, I, I was going to talk to the superintendent. I got a call from the school board member in Gilchrist County today about the Avail program, about making that meeting available to her to watch, uh, Miss, uh, I'll remember it a little bit, but she was referred by some of the Avail people to talk to Putnam County.
And I was just told the Avail, um, workshop was not videotaped.
Well, that's not what, uh, uh, Mike told me a while ago, but I could be wrong. I mean, he may not...
He told me that it didn't come through.
Okay, well, I just, I, I told her we'd try to send her whichever information.
How hard would it be to video this meeting?
Give me two minutes.
You can get with Mike or...
Only Ms. Crawford.
Yeah, and it's okay. I mean, because, because if, if, if one of our employees has asked, or even if someone in the community has asked that we look at it...
Apparently, they contacted somebody down here too about making it available for them to see. Correct? Rick, y'all talked about it in leadership or somewhere?
Well, you're the only person that's talked to me about making the video available.
And so, that's why you brought it up to your board.
Yeah, I told you, I was going to bring up my leadership.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, good, we're ready.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, so at this time, uh...
My party, honey!
At this time, Mr. Headstrom will do our discipline workshop for us?
Okay, uh, thank y'all for giving me an opportunity today to present some information to you. I know Mr. Buckles had talked to me a little bit earlier and we had gone through some things, uh, about the discipline workshop that we needed to go through. I did pass out a, a sheet for you, uh, when you first came in and it has the expulsions on that, but I want to first go over something. I went back through the data and what I did...
Mr. Headstrom, excuse me.
It would be this sheet.
Yeah, I don't have one.
It looks like this.
No, sir.
You got a notebook, Rick?
Yeah, you can use that sample.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so, what I did do was I went in and dug up some data from the first nine weeks of last year, or, well, the first semester of last year, and compared them to the first semester this year. Now, that's not the data that you're looking at. That's just the expulsions that you're looking at. So, um, so that data looks like what took place in 2017, 18 compared to what took place in 2018, 2019, the first semester. Does that make sense, what I looked at?
Yes.
Okay? And so, what I did, uh, I did occurrences. How many occurrences did that take place? And we had 10 out of 20 of our schools go down in occurrences, okay? So, you get that 10 of the schools went down in occurrences versus, and then 10 had gone up. Now, the student data, this means per student. Also, 11 schools went down on number of students that received a referral versus 20, you know, 11 out of 20, okay? Fights, uh, I did fights and 12 schools went down out of 20, okay? So, just to give you an idea of what actually took place versus first semester, one year versus first semester the, the next year. Of course, those are different students, but just wanted to give you that information. Now, out of that data, two of the schools went down tremendously. Kelly Smith Elementary went down 153 in occurrences, okay? They went down 153 in occurrences. Price Middle School went down 212 in occurrences, okay? Y'all don't have that information. I'm just reading that information to you. And with them, I called them to ask them, what did you do to, uh, to, to see that, that difference? Kelly Smith said, "I talked to Ms. Tracy," and, and what she said they did, they owned their kids. In other words, example, you know, uh, these are our kids, we own these kids, we're not get, we can't just send them away, whatever. And they talked about, "We will come and take a child out of your classroom for a period of time, but they're coming back. They're not, you know, we're going to keep them and do that with them." So, really, owning their kids is what she, they really stressed and they worked on hard this first part of this semester, which is, is tough. There's a little bit different kids that we have.
It's kind of an elementary teacher, is it, by their type, for, so that's pretty neat relationship, what you always talk about.
So, Price went, went down, uh, 212 occurrences, 212 occurrences from the year before. What they did, they did this road, uh, roadmap to responsibility by this Larry Thompson, this book, they read it as a school. They also had, he came and talked to them at the beginning, what was end of the summer, you know? And so, Michelle out there felt like this really had a lot to do with that, you know? And it's a lot about putting the student to be responsible for their behavior, okay? So, uh, and they felt like this was, uh, and, and those two schools really worked on, number one, owning the kids, and number two, having the kids be responsible for their behaviors and their actions and so on, uh, owning the kids.
And I actually went to that session, um, and it was really good, and that guy's actually a nationally known speaker.
Yeah.
So, it was a real good session.
So, with that, with that said, I, I did a little quote I was reading that says, "Most, most people spend more time and energy going around problems than they do trying to solve them." That's Henry Ford said that, and it really makes sense. And I think that the schools, cause you can't take Jenkins and, uh, Miller Middle and compare them, they're different schools, you know? And those schools have different problems and it's up to the people that are at those schools to come up with solutions and ways to, uh, uh, help with the discipline, you know? And they, we are public schools, we can, that, we, we do have to deal with our own on our kids and, and helping them to get better. So, with that, I wanted to share that data. Now, the next paper, you do have a copy of this, this, this copy here. These, this, this is a breakdown of the kids that reached the top, the peak, that were expelled from our school system.
Or put up for expulsion.
Or put up for expulsion, okay? Total put up for expulsion was, was 25, 25 kids.
Let me break in just a minute.
Okay.
Something that has happened since we've been in this process, and I've talked to Rick for a year or two, and we've kind of put it off and put it off and talked to Randy and Thomas and everybody, but there is now, if we expel a child from our school district for whatever length of time, up to two years as Florida law allows, there is no reason that they should not receive to continue, uh, their education through what, what means that the district, through Randy, has provided. And so, you're really expelling from attending school, but you're not expelling them from availing themselves.
Education, right.
Education. So, anybody that says otherwise, they don't know what they're talking about. The next thing is that, like, that you don't know what to do until you hear about it, and the group of teachers that came from CLO, the superintendent got with his staff and they, they added a unit over at CLO, so now they've got their own self-contained alternative class, which, which would be financially nice, but how are you going to get your school district to a B or A if you can't concentrate on the, the ones that need the academic help? So, Randy, I'll be quiet for a minute and turn it over to you.
Okay, so we had, a total of put up for expulsion, we had 25, okay? Next, there was a total expelled from transportation. Now, that means just transportation was five. The total expelled from school was 13, so you're half of the...
Of the ones that were put up.
Yes. Total assigned to solution centers, four. Total remaining in school, three. Now, what Mr. Buckles was talking about, we at every one of them, all of them, were offered mental wellness services. Now, that comes from that Senate bill, 7026. I've had Stephanie here or Joelle here or mental well, to talk to the parent, have them sign that, uh, consent to allow us to provide them with mental wellness counseling, because when the child does come back into the school system, we want them to be mentally okay. You know, we want to help them, uh, provide that, sir, because that's what we're supposed to be doing with those dollars, okay?
I have been tremendously impressed and satisfied with what I've seen from Ms. Welland and the group.
No, she's wonderful.
So, we also have Ms. Deal comes also. Ms. Deal is involved in homeschool and the student services, we purchased 15 computers that we will, uh, loan out to kids that we put up for expulsion, or if they make expulsion, so they can continue their education, either through Odyssey or through Florida Virtual School. So, what we want to do...
A reason for them not to continue their education?
No, no, that's, we, we're doing our part to make sure that, now, they may have to come meet, uh, at a local library or at a school after hours, and it's been a kind of a battle, because when you expel somebody from the school system, that means they're, they're expelled. But what we've tried, we've worked around is being able to, we want to provide them because they will come back to us.
Yes.
Well, not only, not only the board, but the superintendent, under Florida law, uh, the district school superintendent shall recommend plans to the district school board, not only for proper accounting of students at school age and attendance and control of, of students at school and other, uh, best, and will best promote the welfare of the students, but each district superintendent shall fully support the authority of his or her principals, teachers, and school bus drivers to remove disobedient, disrespectful, violent, abusive, uncontrollable, and disruptive students from the classroom. So, it, that same statute language goes on to the principal, so it kind of rolls up to the superintendent, and then, it's like the gentleman that came the other day that was not happy, okay? Do you, that, they can opt out to come before the board and present their case, but that didn't quite happen that way, and that's okay. I mean, it, but that's what it's for and to, uh, with, with the, with convolution of all the purple rock problems and violations, you really, it's going to take Charlie some more research before they're comfortable with that.
Mr. Headstrom, for these, for these students that we're talking about, that we're providing, um, means for them to continue their education, just not in their school, what about the, um, state assessments? Will they be allowed? How will we handle that? Have we...
Well, that would have to be done, you know, in a very, you can't just give them a test and let them take it.
No, no, I mean, so have we...
And they need to be appropriately supervised, just like when they take an Odyssey test.
Yes.
In other words, uh, the, we have teachers that assign these kids work, and so they do the work, and then they have to come take a test, cause we don't, we want to make sure that it's them taking the test. So, we do have to provide a certain amount of time that they come to a public library or to a school after hours and meet with a, a person to be able to take that test. I would imagine it would be the same way, that when we, I would need to talk to Renee Lamrow on that, that if they're going to take, it should be like I'm a homeschool.
Yeah.
We had homeschools that would come in and take it with the others.
We designate certain...
But if they're expelled, then what we would need is make sure that we had Ms. Deal, what I have her, they schedule with her at a time, and she either goes to the public library, or they come to her office and they sit, then they take their test at that time.
All of them have to be submitted ahead of time for state tests?
For the ones that are going to be taken, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, so I would, I would imagine if it's not a third grader or someone taking the test for the purposes of graduation...
Right.
It probably wouldn't happen that year for the state.
So, then Renee will be crucial in this part of it, making sure, because you have to let them know in advance.
This is just be given a good educated, I hate to use the word guess, but, but it's a pretty...
I don't know for sure that that would take place, is what basically Thomas is saying and what I think.
You're thinking it, it won't.
If graduation's on the line or promotion is on the line, I'm pretty sure that it would, and, uh, and I know allowances can be made for that to happen, because like you said...
So, third and seniors definitely want to look at our third graders.
Soft mores.
And they're taking the, uh, the test for the first time or someone who's...
Okay.
And Mr. Bowler's correct, if we are working on the expulsion committee and we have a child that comes up and they're, they can make it to graduation, or they can pass a grade, that comes into play as we decide how the expulsion will, will, the length of it and what they can do, and they can have permission to be reevaluated and come back to take a test or something.
And same with EOCs and of course exams, you know?
Yeah, we, we have one, a child that right now, that was put up for expulsion, uh, the committee decided not to expel her, cause she was so close to graduation. She, just the other day, she's finished all her work, all her coursework that she needed, and now she doesn't come to school, she works, and, but she has to come back and take the ACT, cause she's taken it so many times. They have to take that or take the, uh...
FSA.
FSA.
Madam Chair, I've got, Darrell's getting a good call, see if we can have Renee Lamrow come down?
Okay.
Just answer that one.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now, the breakdown for reasons of it, I thought that was something that you might want to know or have knowledge of, if you look, yes.
Can I ask a question just, so if a student is expelled, then are they off of the district?
FTE?
Right, and, and, uh, for, but, the district score, like, if, so they're technically, they are not students of Putnam District Schools?
Yes, well...
When they're expelled, they are withdrawn.
Withdrawn, so then how would they be tested?
Well, we...
That's why Renee is coming down.
Oh, because Thomas...
I'm, I'm saying you just can't...
We've allowed caveats to...
Yeah, and those students are usually, the names are submitted, and, uh, and I know exceptions can be made when she goes in and does corrections before and after FTE, cause things happen outside of those periods about students coming and leaving, and corrections have to be made, and, and some things have to be done manually, and this would obviously fall in.
Our, our whole point of this was, was the point of, is offering kids that have been expelled a way of servicing them here in our county, because a lot of, a senior will not come back to you, but they are going in the community. We do care to make sure that they have their education. The other point was, a lot of them may be fifth grade, so we want them to continue and to keep on track. It wasn't really concerned about a FSA score or anything like that. You know, this is, what, how many students, we have a little over 11,000, and we're talking about 13 out of that, okay? That's what you're, you're talking about, 25 being put up.
I remember you told me when you and I met on a concern I had about a student, you said, "You got that student in a neighboring county, uh, got him enrolled over there."
Yes, yes.
Things were moving in their favor.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like we're not just throwing them out, just getting rid of them. We're making provisions for them.
For somebody to, to even say that would be just totally off base and on another planet, because it would be, you know, we had a child that we had a lot of ruckus over recently that was, had left here, went to St. John's County, enrolled in a high school over there, and got expelled the first year there, came back here, got enrolled, and wound up going through it again, and then we're the bad guys, you know? So, I, I don't know, it, if, if, if they're going to disrupt the orderly process of a school and keep the kids that our instructional staff and teachers are trying to teach that want to learn, then something's got to be done, and, and providing these alternatives to sitting home and doing nothing is the best we can do.
Well, and going back on this, last year, the school district only had three solution centers. In other words, and they were based at the high schools. And what the management team did, provided three more to the middle schools, and we just recently added, and the guy that was working today is his first day at CLO, okay? So, now you have seven, before they get expelled, you have solution center, they have ISS and solution center, where there's plenty of warnings before you know you're headed that way, and we're giving kids plenty of opportunities. And a lot of that, what we want it...
About elementary schools.
What we want, I'll, I'll tell you that in just a second. What we want to do is not punish the child, but correct that behavior. That's what we're really after. You know, we are trying desperately to correct their behavior, so we don't want them going, we don't want them up for expulsion. We'd much rather the child be moved back into the classroom, getting their education, cause that's going to help our community, educated child, you know? So, that's what we're really after on that.
Only though, if they can...
If they can behave, that's why you say change behavior.
If they can stop behavior that disrupts into our learning process.
Exactly. They have to, they have to do that, and I'll go into that in just, just a little bit.
Here's Renee.
The, the next little, is breakdown by school. So, if you see those numbers beside, those are the schools that have put kids up for expulsions, up for expulsion.
Renee, can you come up to the, Mike, and, uh, there's a question that I can answer to. Madam Chair, you want to repeat your question?
Yes, sir. We were asking, because the, when a student is expelled from our district, we do make an effort to help that child to keep on track if he or she... And especially our seniors and third graders, which Thomas pointed out. Senior needing to take the test for graduation, but has been expelled, is there a way of provision and for that third grader? And we haven't had any third graders, um, I hope not, God forbid, but if, if so, what, what do we do? What, how, how can we help them? Or do they test at all?
We have somebody that can either go to the home and test them, or we've had kids test that have been expelled at the public library before. We send somebody to meet them there, but we make sure they get tested.
Can I ask whose, is it the student's responsibility to know that they need to take the test, or does the district say, maybe when they're expelled, you know, "We're going to contact you to take the test"? Do we do that, or does, is it up to the student?
It's usually up to the student, but the way I operate, my testing department is, I leave no test behind.
Okay.
That's kind of how I feel. I double-check everybody to ensure that we get as many tested, including those students.
Okay, good, that's what we wanted to know. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Renee.
So, she doesn't have...
Okay, so you see the schools by breakdown, that's how many that they have put up for expulsion, um, and some of those are transportation that is adding, added in there to that, okay? You had asked about elementary schools, and one of the things that I did start off doing was, uh, trying to help out elementary schools that, because they don't have a solution center or a place to send that, and also holding, trying to cut down on suspensions, because if a kid's not in school, then they're on the street, they're not learning, we want to try to cut that down and reduce that number down. So, and by doing that means that I work with elementary schools, and I was hoping to go to the middle schools and ask the middle schools if we could send an elementary school kid over in their solution center for five to 10 days, whatever we could do to try to help change that behavior, work with them on their, their behavior issues, and they wouldn't count and get suspended, they'd be able to do the work and come back. Well, I presented that to a couple of middle school principals, and it wasn't very much welcome. In other words, they'd, uh...
Enough of them.
And so, I've been around people enough to read them enough to know that there's no reason to go up that tree, because it's not going, if they don't think it's going to work, I don't want to force them to do that, because then it's going to put a kid in a bad situation, and I don't want to do that. So, what I thought about then was, well, what can we do? So, what I came up with is, uh, and I'll just use five days for example, and I, and I went around to the elementary schools, and we've, we've done this at Inlarcan Elementary, Browning Pierce, uh, Mellon, several of the schools where they've, they've kids already, they've been out a lot of, of suspension days, okay? And so, what I've said, when you get to that point, this is what you need to do. We, we send them home, we, we, they stay out of school for five days. The first day of that, you give them work, you give them all their academics that they need to do. One thing that I've asked is that, that the, they do, the teacher creates a lesson plan around behavior, around the issue that the child's having in the classroom. So, they, they're, they come back on the third day and they do their lesson, they catch up, they do their work, they turn in their, their work that they're supposed to be doing, they also do a lesson on behavior, on, uh, the issue that they're having, the behavior problem. Then they get two more days worth of work, and they come back on the fifth day with that work graded, and we just try to concentrate on their four cores, and, uh, they also do another lesson on behavior, you know? And then the child comes back. Those days don't count against them, because they are getting their educational services provided through them one-on-one with a teacher of record, yes.
So, am I to understand that the teacher has just stopped what they're doing and come up with an entirely new lesson plan just centered around this kid and that particular behavior?
I told them, "I'm not picking the teacher," and I'm, I've asked the principal and our assistant principal, principal who I'm talking to, "They need to pick out that." And what I'm doing is paying their hourly rate, this, the district's paying them hourly rate, so, because I'm paying them for the extra duty of what you're talking about, yes.
It may not be that, that's their teacher.
It may not be that, you know, what I didn't want to force it on the teacher, "You got to do this." I left that up to the administration to pick a teacher that, you know, you want the kind of teacher that's number one, is going to have a lesson around behavior and try to modify, "This is why you got suspended, this is what you don't need to do," and also at the same time...
More than one teacher could use that lesson plan?
Yes, yes, yes.
If a kid's, okay.
Yeah, and and if it's using profanity or acting out in violence in the classroom, they can counsel them, that child with a with a behavior modification plan that they have for that child, along with the reading math science that they're their full core lesson that they have with that, and the child gets one-on-one with that, and they also, they don't count days off because the child is still getting their education, and we're still educating that child within that five days. So it also gives that, you know, when that child is misbehaving in that classroom with eighteen kids in it, they're out for five days. You see what I'm saying? But they're also getting their academics so they don't get behind, and we can stay up on FSA, but we can also construct what what allowed that child, what what behavior, why did the child misbehave? And so we're correcting that behavior. It's not about punishment, it's about trying to change behavior, you know, and that's what we can get more shifted around to, to where when the child does come back, they're behaving, you know.
And they're not behind academics.
And they're not behind academics, yes.
Oh, okay. I was I was visualizing something totally different. I was thinking the kid was there in the classroom with this teacher.
This is this is what they actually do, Ms. Gilliard. They ask the parent, and they work with the parent in the school. For instance, and this is an example I gave them, if it was me, I would schedule a time, say, you know, twelve-thirty, one o'clock, the kid comes back, we get out at two-thirty. So the parent gets them there at that time, and then they stay and ride the bus home, so the parent's not back and forth. So you're trying to work with the parent, so you take away at least part of that, not having to come back. Also, out on the west end and the south end, there's a long distance sometimes to a school, and families are financially, you know, there's a their gas and stuff that costs to get there, so we're working with them on that.
So if if that were the case, and you've got a teacher that's working with them, where's their class?
They have a planning period. They may have, it may be an IA. It would be somebody that has a lesson that has that planning period that cover. I told them, I will, I will, most of the people are spending about three extra, two to three hours, and what we did was, we used the money that we used on the student code of conduct, we saved about fourteen thousand dollars on that. So I'm using that money to pay the teacher to help the student, so the student stays in school more, or has the lessons and has the academics more. I'm using that money to pay the teacher, because it is an extra duty for the teacher when you're asked to do that, and I want them to be paid for that, okay? So that's one thing that we're doing that's different, that that does help out the 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 kids and so on. So it's the four subject areas and behavioral lesson plans. And they could do that for ten days if that child does something that's that I know Browning Pierce did it for one-on-ten. The next thing that.
How long has this been in place? I'm I'm trying to see.
This is the first year.
Are we seeing a return on our investment? I went home for five days. Now I'm back in school, I stay five days, and I'm gone again five days. Are we seeing that, has it been in place long enough for us to to?
Ms. Gilliard, it was only, you know, by the beginning of the year, we were trying to send those kids over. That did not work out, and it's never really worked out when Jenkins was sending kids to Palaca High School from Solutions, it it didn't work out well. They had more problems over there, ended up getting expelled. It worked in South Pupman because the person that you have in charge there of that of the IA was doing a tremendous job, you know, that they were doing, so it worked well there. Palaca High School had all kinds of issues. They have an outstanding person there now, but they're handling just Palaca High School students. We're not, and Jenkins has their own, and now CLO has their own, so they're able to handle just those amounts of kids.
I guess for me, and this this may come up at a later time in another workshop months from now, I was kind of more into consequences and way to make things a little tougher on some of the kids, but I think I think Rick and Randy understand where I'm coming from on some of that. You guys are still getting into the dynamics of what occurs when when somebody's expelled, and I guess, and this is good because you need to know that, that there's there are opportunities, and anybody that comes here and tries to say that we're just throwing kids out is wrong. You know, I I was looking at an alternative to perhaps expulsion, and I read in, I was telling Randy, I mentioned it to Rick briefly, you know, stuff like paddling, that's pretty archaic, and if you tried that again, you'd you'd wound up, you'd wind up being national news and sued every time you turn around. But I I looked at the sweat program that we have with law enforcement. If you had, you know, in certain instances, and it would be up to the superintendent and his team to work with principals to give us recommendations, there there might be alternatives to expulsion if we work with the sheriff's office, and and I believe Florida statutes, I was looking for it here because I read it during our last workshop on insurance, gives us the authority to work with law enforcement to, if we want to work a program like that. But obviously, you'd have to have enough, and you'd have to figure out who, the age of the child and who they're working with and under direction of law enforcement. That's that's just a thought, but we can work on that later.
Would that still get them out of the classroom?
Well, in lieu of expulsion, if if they if they don't take advantage and go on a weekend and work under supervision with the rest of the work crew, then then they'd have to be expelled. I mean, I wouldn't think they'd have to leave the classroom, but if if the committee, there are certain circumstances that don't involve violence or, you know, cursing out adults and trying to hit them.
And threatening them.
And threatening them, but.
Because some of, oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, because some of the expulsions didn't occur in the classroom with the teacher.
Right.
It was a fine outside or.
But a lot of, a lot of that is.
But the one another day did.
Yeah, well, it started with a female in the bathroom situation.
I'm just looking for other alternatives to the 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 policy to, you know, to make kids, there's some kids that they get out there and work, but they're, we do utilize it. I'm sure Thomas could speak to that, but those, that's just a thought, and it may take, maybe harder to do than I even think it is, but go ahead.
Well, speaking of consequences, it's come up in negotiations, and the contract speaks very little about discipline. It talks, it it references the statute language that you mentioned earlier about removing disruptive kids, but beyond that, they wanted to just have a dialogue to see what could be done, because a lot has been said lately about, what do we do for the other twenty-three, twenty-four kids in the classroom?
Right.
Who are trying to behave themselves and and get that education. So, you know, the code of conduct is revised every year. So one of the things that we've done is we've developed a task force, and that's headed up by Mark, and and we haven't met yet, this just came up in our last negotiations, but or meeting. But but the big idea here is to brainstorm and come up with some some other alternatives, and then, you know, would have to, the law has to support it, obviously, but the things that we're allowed to do, and if we want to make some of the consequences more fitting to to the crime, so to speak, or or maybe have less occurrences before certain things happen, but we're we're in the, that's, those stages are in their, the very infancy right now, but.
May I ask regarding your task force, has every position been filled?
No, we're in the process right now.
I I want to share something, even though the school no longer exists, and and when I was at Beasley, and and we understand the situations and things that occurred there, but the leadership took it upon themselves, more or less, like Randy said, to own the students. And I don't have any statistics, I just, I just have the students that, from the program that was implemented called Oasis, it was implemented. And I tell you, the children there that started out, that I met when I first got there, were kids that I wouldn't have taken any place pretty much with me, but through mentoring and being with those people, case in point, my niece Bubbles would not be in this school system right now had it not been for Oasis. Ask anybody about Bubbles, mention Ms. Bubbles.
Well, I.
Oasis brought her own, and it was about relationships and owning the students. And we had some hardcore students there, hardcore, but these students ended up graduating and being leaders at Palaca High, and I could name some of them.
Well, that's the, that's the former, that's the.
So if possible, would you take some names?
Sure.
That that I would like to to offer if.
Of course.
You know.
Absolutely.
Okay. One, Reverend Mulberry, Alonzo, no, that's your daddy.
You want Don?
That's you too, okay, all right. And and Dietrich, Dietrich Chapanet, and and I say, I I promise you, I was able to survive there because of the people and the way they latched on to their kids. Now, the late Reverend Butts would say there were some that that acted like they were sprayed cockroach, but but the majority of those students, they 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 wanted to to our approval. That's what I was looking to say. JT adopted a whole family of boys, and and they would mess up because it would disappoint, the parson, yeah, and it would disappoint him. And so if you if you would be willing, take those names and and.
So what is, what is the job of this task force?
Well, let me start by kind of, it's collective bargaining. I don't know if you could have citizen input. Well, you know, and that may be true, but I'll I'll start, Mark Modle, Punitive Federation Teachers, teacher of Palac High School. The reason we brought this to the bargaining table is because we see, you know, I, you know, we've talked about expulsions, and we see a lot of positive things happening here, but but we've got teachers that are frustrated every single day.
Absolutely.
We've got teachers leaving this district.
I know.
Leaving the profession, because for a lot of rise, a lot of reasons, but two teachers have left our district. Last Tuesday at our rep council meeting, I was told about two teachers, one at Browning Pierce and one at Miller Middle, that are gone now. They're they're gone because of student behavior and discipline issues. They just, they just can't take it on a daily basis. And so we brought it, you know, understanding that this is not really something that's to be addressed through contract language, but that's an avenue, a a place for us to actually have a dialogue and kind of begin a discussion to say, what can we do to help support those teachers to keep them here? Because we're already having problems recruiting, retaining teachers, and this is, you know, this is a, this is something we need to address. So with with that kind of stuff in mind, you know, I've been hearing from folks, you know, these daily, it's the little, little behaviors, you know, where the egregious things are being handled. You know, they're being handled appropriately. We're expelling kids that are making threats and committing violent acts and doing these things. But there's some kids that are, they're not committing acts of violence, they're they're just constant disruption. And we've talked about, I'm going to share, every time I'm here, when we were talking about this, I I get on my phone to send it to you guys, and it doesn't autocomplete your email addresses on my phone. I got to get on the computer to do it. But I've got an article I would like all of you to read, and I'll share it with Rick and everybody else as well. And it's about instructional time, and it's recently written by somebody, an educator in Georgia.
We got it.
They've got it, you already got it? A lot of us, a lot of us have. Oh, okay, you already read it? Okay. I shared it on Facebook, it's been going around a little bit, but anyway, you know, the article talks about the stolen instructional time?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I've I've been thinking about that a lot lately, you know, and this is something I've been thinking about for years and talking about, you know, a few students, you know, we've, and I'm all for, every student deserves an education, and, you know, we but we've, we have seemed to have focused a lot on making sure those, we we don't lose instructional time for those students who are who are misbehaving, but but the other kids in the class.
What about the ones that are behaving?
Exactly, right. And so so the metric we need to be recording isn't lost instructional time for those kids that are misbehaving. How much instructional time are they stealing from the other twenty-some kids in the classroom?
Amen.
And so from a student success point of view, you know, we've got, we've got to look at this. We've got to figure out some way to remove those disruptions from the classroom. From a teacher recruitment or retention standpoint, we have to figure out a way to deal with this. And that's why we brought it to the bargaining table, because we wanted to, I don't have the answers, you know, I've got some ideas, and I'll just toss one out there, this is just something for us to talk about. This is more of an issue at the elementary schools because they don't have ISS, they don't have a solution center. The kids come back to the classroom, and they've got the kids all day. For me, I've got a kid for forty-eight minutes in a class, and then they're gone to the next class, you know, so they don't, they don't build up that constant over the day. But for our elementary school teachers with the same group of kids all day long, that kid that is doing these, these little things, that they're handling things in class, they're going through the bips like they're supposed to, and they write a referral, and some schools have the policies, and I'm not sure this is how uniform this all is, but, but you can't do, can't go through all four bips in a day, because then the parent hasn't had a time to to respond to that and intervene at home, and that's all good. But that's taking instructional time for the rest of the class.
That's the type of stuff I was intending to work on in the workshop, but we're not, we're going to have another one.
Yeah, that's, and that's what, that's what this, I think that's what we want to address here. That's what the, you know, in bargain, that's why we brought it to bargain.
A policy that has some teeth in it.
And that's why, yeah, we we want to, I think this task force, the idea here would be to get a lot of teachers and administrators, get folks that are in the classrooms, okay, these are the issues we're facing. First, lay those out, because that's, how do we fix it so we know what exactly the problems are? We heard from the folks at CLO, and some of those, some of the issues they're having are being addressed. They had a group come over from Kelly Smith and around the the fifth grade group that came up to sixth grade that that is really challenging, and so some specific issues to address that group there. But but our other elementary schools are are struggling. Browning Pierce lost one, you know, a teacher, my understanding, that was a brand-new teacher, only been in the classroom a couple of weeks, who said, you know what, I can't do this.
Bless her heart.
And I think, I think that was the third teacher in that classroom this year, maybe before, okay?
It's not just, it's not just here.
This is a problem statewide.
Oh, I know.
And there are a lot of other reasons as well, but but if we can help with this side of it, that this, removing those stresses every day, so the teachers can just teach and not deal with this now, you know, and I've got a little personal here for a second. My apologies.
If you didn't care about them, we wouldn't want you in here.
Well, I get a text message from my wife saying she can't do this anymore.
Oh, bless her heart. Because of that?
Mm-hmm. And it's not her administrator's fault, because they're helping, they're doing what they can, but we don't have the teeth in the code of conduct. There need to be some changes in the code of conduct.
Absolutely.
That will allow for these kids to be removed from these classrooms for some period of time that allows the teachers to do what they need to do on a daily basis. When the kids come back to the classroom, because there's not a, there's, we don't have an avenue, we don't have anything to do with these children. We don't want them to, we can't, we don't, I mean, we can't expel kids for these little disruptions, you know, and we don't want to do that. But we need some way for them to be removed from that classroom so that the education can continue for the rest.
It was broken down ten years ago, and it's come this far. I'd look at where we've come in the last year with Rick and Randy and what changes have been made, but we've got to get down to consequences. Like I was talking, it doesn't have to be expulsion for a work program, it could be suspension, in lieu of suspension. Try to work with these kids.
But get them out of the classroom.
But it's, it's, it's the, it's that two percent, three percent that keep ninety-seven percent from getting to learn.
One thing, Mark, I want to point out, that, talking about new teachers, our novice teacher mentor program that Ms. Whitehurst is leading, I mean, we're providing daily support for all these new teachers.
I know, I know, we are, we are.
That's kind of, that's what they need. I mean, I'm not putting it on all the teachers, but there's a lot of, you know, there's a big learning curve in how to deal with this.
Absolutely, absolutely. And and especially for alternatively certified teachers that come in and don't have, you know, the education background from schooling, you know, they think it's a lot easier than.
And then too, we as adults, you know, our, the way we carry on and treat each other, you know, the things where we get upset with each other and don't do like we should. Our society is showing our kids some ugly ways to.
Well, and.
Do things that it's okay to disrupt when people.
Absolutely.
You know, the the guy in Washington, so it's.
And and I think, Jane's right there.
And and you're right, it it's going to take all of us working together and bring that parent on board, you know.
Little history, when when we went to progressive.
Sit in that room.
Progressive discipline plans, and which is a good thing for liability and legality reasons, it took the 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 individual judgment of a person that, I can give this kid a lick and let him go back to class, and it not going to build up to a suspension the next time they're here. And once they did that, it changed the dynamics of education, and you've got step one, step two, step three, and they're out, or whatever, however it works. And a little history in that whole process is that zero tolerance created a monster for education, because what's what's zero tolerance? A kid picks up a cookie and pretends like it's, it bites it off and it's shaped like a gun, and you're going to throw that kid out.
David, I'm glad you said that, because that's the point that I've been trying, that's the point I've been trying to make here for a minute, and we can't, we can't throw the baby out with the bathwater. And you brought up your niece Bubbles, I believe, and and there are certainly, especially elementary-age kids, but there are a lot of kids right on up through eighteen, nineteen years old, who all they need is just, you know, a little bit of extra. And and so we have to be careful while we're undertaking all of this, that that we can't adopt a off-with-his-or她的head policy.
Well, and here's.
Kid steps off the sidewalk, and now they're kicked out of school.
Here's another thing, and I've talked to Rick and Randy about it, inappropriate touching. You know, a kid in high school grabs a girl in an inappropriate spot, and the dean sees so many things in the course of the day, he'll say, man, you know, what are you doing? And and the girl, she might be crying, and it gets over with, and it may not get a referral. But those are things that you've got to, you've got to be careful with, because then that sends a message that it's okay to to do things like that.
Oh, that one didn't get a referral, but my son did it, and he got a referral. So so we're going to have to be consistent.
And then some kids are actually playing and do it by mistake, and but the the zero tolerance stuff took the individual judgment out of what you can do with with, in a lot of instances. So it's, it's really scary, because then you'll have somebody come in there.
Come and sit in that class with that student. We've, we've, we've done these things, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, y'all ready? Okay, I do want to talk about what Mr. Modle has has said in talking with and working with elementary schools that have that policy. Some of the schools have, he's right on with what he's talking about, and the biggest thing is, you have a responsibility to handle the child that is doing the misbehavior and disruption, but it's very important that those ones that are left in that classroom, that that they are removed. So a lot of your elementary schools now are having ISS, you know, he says it, but they've come to that point to where, guys, we got to do something about this, we've got to figure this. We've got to figure this out. I know Kelly Smith, and I know Elarkin Elementary, they have a pull-out class that the kids go to for timeout. In other words, you normally have a timeout partner that you send a child to back and forth, but you don't want to send a disruptive child to the naval dirt, and that's unfair.
Right.
But they do have ISS. Well, they have found a way to manage an ISS at those bigger elementary schools where they've had it, where it's gotten so bad, that they want to protect and keep the education going on. So, we are, some of the schools have done that on their own. They have the words, an IA in there, someone in there to, for a timeout for that.
We've come a long way in the last year.
So, I want to go into the next, you know, we did the, I went through the elementary throughout, the next, I got two other things, suggestions that I, that we've come up with that I felt like will help. This Hope Squad that we've come up with, helping others persevere every day, some of the things that we're doing. And we're on about our fourth class over there. We're taking the kids that have created the most disruption, have most referrals at CLO, and we're working with them two days a week, pulling them out their seventh-period class, alternating with their seventh-period with their sixth-period, so they're not getting pulled out of the same class every day. And that, what we're doing with those kids, it's not about punishment. You know, I'm sure the OAs is, it wasn't bringing them kids and making them miserable. You're just going to create more problems. What you try to do with those kids is teach them how to behave in an academic setting. But you also work with those kids to see where they're in the wrong, so they can correct those behaviors that they're doing. So, we do things like a buddy bench. Ace Hardware and East Polaco donated real, two real nice benches, and the kids are going to paint the benches. And the purpose of the bench is, if you have a friend, or if you know of someone that's a new student, or someone is not feeling, you go up, invite them to the buddy bench, you sit down, and you have a caring conversation with them. So, we're teaching them how to be able to do that. Another thing that we're doing is they're planting flowers around the school, around that area. We're going to get donations and going to plant flowers. So, they're doing something good, and they're feeling good about themselves, and I don't, if we doing those things, I feel like they'll be more likely to be more kind to their teacher and to their fellow classmates. So, we're doing those kind of things, and it is working out. We've had like three or four teachers that said that these things are working, that they've seen some change of behavior, which is good, and that's what you want. One of the other things is random acts of kindnesses that we're teaching these kids. For example, we're having them tell a teacher that they feel like really doesn't like them, because you do have to listen to what those kids feel like. You know, you may talk about the teacher, but the kid feels like the teacher does not like them. So, what we're asking that kid, and we're buying this stuff, cards for them to write a real nice note, and maybe a candy bar or something nice, and give it to that teacher, and see how that works for them. So, and you're kind of reversing those kind of things around. So, we're doing that, and we feel like that's a better way of doing this stuff, and we're, hopefully, we'll see that. And we want them to pick a child, you know, and some of the workshops and stuff I've gone to that I feel like are real successful, sometimes we have to teach kids how to act with a grown-up that doesn't like them. They know they don't like them. How do you deal with that? We all know how. You're going to have to, the more you fight with it, the worse it's going to get, you know? So, we're trying to do a lot of those kind of things with this, and this is a Hope Squad that we have, and we're going to continue to work with those. You know, I know Dr. Fennelator, North Point Youth, he's helped me out tremendously over there at Jenkins with these kind of kids, and just have a heart for those kids to try to help them. The next little thing that I felt, and doesn't cost a lot of money, this is scheduling your most problem students. And this is something I started at Jenkins, but you schedule your most problem students, and it's easy to find, you look it up, how many kids had referrals, and you ask where they come over from CLOs, how many, where are your tough kids that you had that caused problem and disruption in classes? Well, you set them up with a teacher, you know, you have three electives, so you have plenty of electives, electives for them to do. And the one we started over at Jenkins was a construction class, and it was all boys. You know, it was all boys, and it was 10 boys. And Ms. Gilliard and Ms. Pickens, I know you know about, you pick teachers that build good relationships with teachers, you know, with students. And they see that teacher every day, and they're kind of like a mentor for that kid. And they work on, the boys work on construction, the girls could be doing something similar to a hair class, some kind of, teach them some kind of vocational skill along with that. At the same time, you're working with that child every day about behavior, and about how to act in an academic setting, how to set yourself, how to do things, what it's like to be kind. Because really, truly, some of these kids, what they go in the majority of their time is probably a tough situation for them. And I'm not knocking the parents, I know the parents are probably just trying to put food on the table and a place to put their head, you know? But a lot of them are dealing with a lot of tough issues, but they, this is an opportunity for, they see that. So, if a teacher is having a problem with that, they report to that teacher and say, look, I don't want to write a referral, could you talk with them about that? And they see that mentor every day, and that helps throughout the year to slow down and further. What we saw is reduction on those kids, they all did move forward. There were some we had to take out of there because they didn't do what they were supposed to do, you know? But those kids all went on to the ninth grade, and they learned something. Home Depot donated all their tools and everything, they fixed fences around the school, they planted gardens and so on around the school, and flower beds and so on. So, it's just trying to get those kids to be able to do something that makes them feel good about themselves.
Now, everything Randy just talked about is really good stuff, and I think a lot of principals have done that for years. The only problem is, we do become liable if you have a custodian supervising the child or someone, and they get scalded at the cafeteria cleaning out a pot or something. But those are the only thing, that's why I like the option of a work release program or any of these kind of programs or things that we need as alternatives.
But he
To build that rigor
Rigor, relevance, relationship.
Relationship that you talked about.
But what I hear, a theme in what you're saying is, we're teaching and we're modeling. Because like you say, the television shows that they're watching now certainly is not teaching anybody anything, you know, how, as to how to wait our turn to speak, you know, and to share our opinion. And so, we have to teach them.
Yes.
We, I mean, and what better place to start than our elementary schools, where we can show them how kind words, you know, how does that make you feel if somebody did that to you?
Yes.
You know? Sometimes they never think about that. They don't reflect on what they've done, and what you're saying Browning Pierce is doing with the five-days-out. You cause that kid to reflect on what he's done. Don't move on yet, but look back and see what you've done. Now, how can you do that differently? Or what would you do next time if this situation comes up? It sounds like, I mean, you're working, I mean, we're looking for something. We, the board really wants to support, because we understand that the teachers can't teach if there is a disruption.
And those kids in that class that are behaving deserve.
And we have people that are committed, that are passionate about what they're doing, and we certainly want them in the classroom. So, we
I find it.
Randy, I'm
Go ahead.
Help and support. I've had several calls from teachers that are concerned because they write a referral, the referral takes forever for the referral to get processed.
Process.
The kid's right back in the classroom, or they call them in, they, you know, talk to them, the kid goes back, and the behavior is repeated. Those are the kinds of things that we need to be looking at as well. As far as making the teacher, you know, feel more confident that the problem is going to be handled.
One thing that I was made aware of, I didn't write many referrals in my day, especially not when they got put on the computer, and that, that's a whole nother thing. But there is a place on the referral for teacher recommendation, and apparently, that is often
Not seen or not viewed.
No, that, by the teacher. I talked to a dean that said, I would do what the teacher, you know, requested, but they didn't request anything. So, I follow, you know, the steps. Whereas if a teacher had said, I need them out of my room for two days, you know, at least, then he would have done that. But, so, I mean, I think it would be good for our teachers to just be told, hey, make sure you fill that out.
Each dean has a matrix that's in the code of conduct that they, that they're required to go by. That matrix has one for elementary and one for secondary that they go by, depending on the fence that they go by. But it's definitely something like that and utilizing, and maybe that would cut back on teachers feeling like they were part of the process of the discipline, you know? And that's what I've always told teachers, you, once you write that referral, you're kind of taking it out of your hands and giving it to somebody else to take care of. You can do so many things in your classroom that can, that a dean can't, won't be able to do. But one thing was make sure that we do get out of is that we're protecting the kids that are in there, but at the same, and letting education move on.
Mr. Hestrom, have we had this meeting where, remember, Browning Pierce was hosting it, was going to have someone to come in and do a session on discipline, and CLO was invited to be a part of it?
Yes.
Has that occurred yet?
I think that's this coming.
This coming.
This coming.
This coming Saturday, okay.
And their teachers were invited.
And could we get others? I mean, because the more ideas we get, the better, the better it's going to be for us as a district. And the teachers are a part of the us. It's not us against them. It's us making sure that our kids
Collaborative activity that we are working. We need to work together, because that's the only way this will be solved.
Going back to what Ms. Pickens said about supporting a teacher's recommendation, the only two things that Mark and the rest of his team brought up was, number one, administrative support, i.e. principals actually going in with the mindset of supporting their teachers.
Yes.
And then looking at the actual code of conduct itself, and then maybe adjusting some of those things. So, when they do look at that matrix, it may be a little more teacher-friendly.
Well, actually, Florida law, once again, kind of preempts the contract in that the duties of a school principal, each school principal shall fully support the authority of his or her teachers and school bus drivers to remove, to remove disobedient, disrespectful, violent, abusive, uncontrollable, or disruptive students from the classroom and/or the school bus, and when appropriate, available space each student in an alternative educational setting. So, our principals have to juggle common sense with Florida law, and inadvertently, any administrator in the course of a year is going to find, they're going to have a gray line there, once in a while, they're going to slide over it, because you can't possibly know all of Florida school statutes and Florida school laws. But I think some of these teachers are going to want more punitive measurements, and I don't know that we can, there's a lot of latitude to go that way, other than in symbolic things, like read a statement that anybody involved in a serious fight that disrupts the orderly process of a school and refuses to stop when a record of an adult will be recommended for two years expulsion out of school. Now, this is like, you read it to high school kids. Some of you remember doing that years ago. It worked tremendously, but the problem we encountered, we only expelled like one child for that, and, but I had parents come to the meetings and just raise cane, because we're throwing all the kids out of school, and it didn't, you know, it's all, it's like a police car being parked on the side of the road trying to slow you down. You want to do things to scare them, or to, not scare them, to make them have a fear factor that they might not get to graduate from high school on time, or they might not get to, you know, do something. But there's got to be other ways to figure it out.
I encourage, I'm sorry. I'm going, and I'll talk after you.
I think we also know there are those few teachers that would write a referral if a kid looked at them cross-eyed, you know?
Every day, every period.
We've got to take that into consideration, Mark.
That's where common sense comes into it.
But I think the dialogue between, I think Holly was talking about writing a recommendation on the referral is not a bad idea, and as a principal, when teachers did do that, if I did not follow that, I would have a dialogue with the teacher.
The teacher as to why?
Just say, hey, we need, you know, that didn't follow our progression, but at least give them the opportunity to make a recommendation. So, I think that's, I would think that'd be healthy for the
And then too, to have a dean sit there and tell me that this teacher could have recommended you be suspended for five days, but all they wanted was one day. Look how they care about you. So, we have to look at things from that way, because we're trying to teach them. We want to use that referral to teach them and to correct that behavior. This teacher could have said, boom, but they care about you. The teacher told me she wanted you to graduate, so this is what you get.
And that's a good thing for the attorney to let us know. If a teacher does write a recommendation, and the principal looks at it, and it might be a little skewed from the pupil progression plan that we have to have, as a state requires to have a progressive discipline chart, what's our legality on that? So, I'm sure that's not a big study for you, but it's just advice that would be necessary if we go into something like this.
Absolutely.
It's on the referral already. I mean, it's already there, so apparently, stuff
It's been approved.
It's been approved, because it's there. And I think just having a conversation
David
Would help the teacher to understand that
Why they could or couldn't do it.
Is there anything in Florida statute concerning discipline and the part, the role the parent plays?
Yeah, there is a little bit, but Charlie would know more about that than I would. I mean, we by law stand in place of a parent. If we feel like a child needs to be removed from school, and it would be totally in the best interest of the school district, that child's out of here. And we don't have to serve them, or we do, you know, whatever we choose to do. But in most cases, you know, I think we're going to try to take the parent, the parents involved in every step of the process. I would send Travis Weaver into shock if he were here, but, I mean, the parent has to be notified, you know, within 10 days of a suspension or 24 hours.
Well, and it's amazing to me, the number of parents that don't ever respond.
Jane, I sat in, I want to, I'll tell you, I sat in this, y'all got me on this expulsion committee now, thank goodness, it's so wonderful.
We have you, Dave.
Yeah, I know. And I sat up here the other day, and every member, when it came time to make a recommendation, and I'm not going to bring up anybody's name or any child's name, because I can't do that, but everybody was paralyzed with fear, paralyzed to make a recommendation or a motion, because they didn't want that particular person coming before the school board and calling them a bunch of names and doing stupid stuff. So, I relinquished the gavel, made the motion, and I got a second, you know, which I felt like was my job to support the recommendation of the principal and the superintendent. So, you know, it's, when you're in a climate like that, where even the district staff is paralyzed, because that's what our people are running into out there, and if you get the so-and-so's mama mad, you know, I've stood out here and had them, you know, cursing over a phone at people at the school and stuff, and it just, you hear, you've heard it. I mean, I don't want to walk down a hallway in any school and hear kids using profane, obscene language, so.
Mr. Buckles is remembered in my family for paddling. It was three of my nieces at Browning Pierce. And when, well, Sean had already planned it.
They played a trick on me, yeah.
And now she's a caterer, and he's seen her since, but she fainted when he hit her. And he was so frightened that he loaded all three of them. Pam went too, poured them in his car. Took them to Dairy Queen and brought them some ice cream.
I told the principal.
But they remember him fondly, and no other kids, you know, did anything, because Mr. Buckles will make you faint, but he'll take you in ice cream.
He gets so hard that she faints.
Well, I had a lot of kids play tricks on me.
But that's what they did to him, and he loaded them in the car.
I had it. I had it.
That's, that's a true story. It really happened.
I won't digress and tell you funny stories because I've got a million of them.
But it was that relationship that they remember, not that they had done wrong and got paddled, but the fact that he cared enough after a fake faint to do that. And that's what, we gotta let people know that we care. We're not just trying to kick you out on the street. And we're doing that with, with what we're doing for our kids that are no longer ours because Holly asked the question. They no longer count against our grade, but we're concerned enough that we'll meet with another district and get you in, in that district to attend school and get your education.
There's always that handful of students that you can't, I mean, it's just a handful that you just can't work with, and they're gonna be headed to prison or somewhere. I've had them call, I've had death threats in the middle of the night, and I knew who it was. I had the state attorney's office wire my house. A former student threw a gun, killed his wife. And, you know, I get these calls, what are you gonna do to me now? I mean, you get, I could go on and on about those kind of stories, but that's what discipline calls, causes. It causes incredible heartache and grief, and people want to get you and get back at you. And you could imagine what prosecutors go through and attorneys, you know, if their client doesn't win. But the main thing is trying to help these kids be like the ones Sandy's talking about. The one you can, you can give a paddle to and, and turn around, they hug you, and they go forth and do nothing wrong. There's some you could paddle 10 times every day and they wouldn't care. And, and so you've gotta have common sense judgment. You gotta love kids. But we've gotta have consequences to make them know that they, they just can't walk all over everybody and get away with it.
I think it's important too that, that it comes out of this meeting that we support our teachers and their efforts to make sure that learning takes place in their classroom and that we will support getting those disruptive students out of the classroom so they can teach. You know, that's what I want to get out of this meeting too.
Right. And every student has the right to an education. And when another student is, because of their behavior infringes upon that right, then, you know, that, we, we need to know that. I also would like, I mean, I know that you, you know, obviously changing the discipline matrix, and that's all for before next school year. But, you know, I would like to think that we could develop a relationship with a teacher that is having problems, you know, whether it's classroom management or sometimes it's not. Sometimes it's just a student that, you know, I've been in that classroom and, and it was horrible, fifth period, you know, I mean, I, I remember it vividly.
It was fifth period, actually.
You know, and so.
So it must be to lunch.
But.
Oh, fifth period, no.
Lunch, lunch. I used to say, just don't feed them and, you know, we'd be better. But, but I, I think we need to, we need to put something right, like now, some sort of service that we could go and that teacher doesn't leave Browning Pierce, you know. I, I mean, I don't know, you know, if she led people to think this is, I'm going crazy, you know, could somebody give me help? I don't know.
Or that Lindsay saying she can't do it anymore.
Right, or an experienced teacher.
Done it all these years, and she's a remarkable teacher. And, I mean, she's, she needs.
Well, those are the ones that need to tell us. And they, and they have to do it through Mark. Mark telling me.
And I'm sure they're telling their principals. And they, they gotta have fun. They got to be able to laugh in that classroom and have fun. Yeah, yes, yes. Even the kids just, you.
Madam Chair, I think our board attorney has some answers.
I did quickly look up, while we're sitting here, the question about parental involvement. And there is a Florida statute 1003.32 that talks about when a referral is made that the parent is notified. But in addition to the notification, subsection 2D says that teachers and other instructional personnel shall work with parents and other school personnel to solve discipline problems in their classrooms. So it does contemplate some type of a parental involvement, meet some of those needs.
Right, but if the parents won't get involved.
If they, right.
That's what.
There's no, there's no hammer to require the parent to do that. The only hammer that we really have is attendance if they, and there's a lot of paperwork that you have to go through to.
And Charlie, just the statute has a mechanism for a teacher to help intervene sooner, maybe, and to Mark's point and to Thomas's point about collective bargaining and how this is not the forum for those types of negotiations. But I do want to mention that this provision in the statute exists that says the teachers and other instructional personnel shall have the authority to have disobedient, disrespectful, violent, abusive, uncontrollable, or disruptive students removed from the classroom.
That is, that is Florida law.
And that's what we got to support.
Precedent for the removal from the classroom, not just referral, but.
And I, I think we're, 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 we're there, but we're, we're not there. Randy and, and the, and the, and the team have pulled together so many things that this is the information that, that we pulled together that will help us not be considered an unsafe school district and tagged by the state of Florida. Because that's what this whole thing is about. Make you report every little pushing and incident that happens from kindergarten up so you'll have enough physical occurrences that you become an unsafe school and then they can offer more opportunities, scholarships. That's, that's all this stuff is with, with this progressive discipline. And I know part of it is legal to show that, well, we did this here, and now we're gonna do this, and now it's gonna be a little harder. But there's not, you can't, you gotta have judgment. You gotta have the relationship like Sandy's talking about. And we gotta figure out
And change in behavior.
What we can do to help, to help our teachers.
One thing, one thing I've done over the years as a principal is, and as a dean, is when you get to the point you have to suspend a student, you, and you're talking about parent involvement, you have some levers there. The parent obviously doesn't want them sent home, so that opens up a dialogue with the parent. If you don't want them at home, let's sit down and look at another alternative. And there's many times where I have actually done a parent escort where if you don't want them at home, then you need to take time off your job.
Come to school.
Come to school with them.
Sit in the classroom.
Sit in the classroom, whatever.
I love that.
That or, you know, have them come in, bring them up after school, like Randy's talking about. But you have some leverage without just kicking them out. Okay, parent, you have the opportunity to get involved with your child's discipline now.
But therein is the fact that you were using common sense and great individual judgment, and you weren't trying to, I think our people are so scared and adhering, adhering to the progressive discipline plan that they're scared to use alternative judgment. And we've got to have Charlie investigate what they can and can't do. But usually, if it's in the best interest of the child, and you feel it is, and the parent feels like you can work it out, there's some of these kids that'll never get expelled if we can avoid its suspension or scare them enough that they'll think they're gonna be kicked out of middle school or high school and just, you know, have some symbolic language there that, but, you know, Florida statutes is pretty clear on what we should and shouldn't do for the teachers. And Randy, I can't, you know, his heart's big as Texas. He, he's, he's going above and beyond trying to find the ways to help these kids that we, this handful of kids that don't make it. But, you know, we got, we got to worry about the teachers.
Well, Mr. Hestrom's working extremely hard. I tell you, he works, makes a lot of contact with schools, and he's doing a tremendous job, and he's being positive and doing it. So I appreciate what he's doing.
Oh, I do too.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna make a difference. It might come slow, but it's gonna make a difference.
Yep.
Well, on that, I'd like to sit on that, you know, committee to do that because we do have to reach out to those teachers. I think that's been focused on helping the students, but we do need to make sure that we're helping those teachers that are struggling because we're gonna need all of them, you know.
Yeah, we can't afford to lose anymore.
Mark, tell them, tell them to, to send you information and, and maybe compile something that you could present. I mean, anything you obviously give us in writing turns into public record. But, I mean, we'd like to, I guess, have something you and Randy can work out with, without, and then advise us at some point in the future.
I think it would be appropriate to have at least one board member on the committee anyway. Mr. Buckles, Ms. Dr. York.
Oh, I don't, I don't.
Madam Chair, could I also ask if, I'm, I'm putting her on the spot, Ms. Whitehurst, talking about the novice teacher mentor, could you maybe give us some input on how they are supporting teachers, especially our younger teachers?
Yeah, we're actually planning on doing a.
Can you come up, Tanya, because I know we're trying to record this. But this is important because this is the program that we started this year, and we want to continue this program. But it is helping us sustain teachers and overcome some of these, you know, classroom management issues.
And why you, this is still in the same vein, just out of curiosity, did the teacher that, the one that left Browning Pierce, did she reach out?
That is a new one that I've heard about. I knew that another teacher just left, but it was not related to student. It was related to something else.
Okay, okay.
So I may have to reach out on that one and find out what's going on there.
Reach out to you all.
And they normally reach out to their mentor that's assigned to them, and we've known. I mean, I, I knew we lost one at CLO because of that.
And we've all seen one.
The one at Browning Pierce was the first, that's the first one I've heard on that one in the last couple of weeks. So, so we just actually planned, two weeks ago, the mentors were together, and we will have another spring support session coming up in March for our, we really do it because we have, it's in the evening, so it's more of our brand-new teachers. And so it'll be anyone hired this year or hired, really within the last year. So they have, they have less than one year of experience. And one of the things that we are going to be focusing on is helping them understand the brain of each stage, like so, an elementary, a middle, and a high, and trying to help them understand that, and it's not, this is not in any way putting any blame anywhere, but it's sometimes our teachers don't understand that you have to deal with different age groups of students in different manners because of the way their brain is developed. So in helping them understand that and then knowing, you know, different personalities and, and also, it's not a personal attack against you. This is the way that the student is responding because of their development at that age. Like, you cannot take it personal. It's not about that. And, and that's what's happening a lot of times that we're seeing is they don't know what to do, and they feel like it's in a personal attack on them. So we're going to start there. And then I know in the summer, when we do our summer institute, we're actually going to have a longer session on that and, and just really understanding how that impacts what happens in the classroom and how we can use that to create safe learning environments for all of the students. So I know that's one of the things we are working on. They are reaching out and asking, how to, how do we do this? How do I provide a better environment for my students? So they're asking for that.
She's doing a great job.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Any other questions for me or any?
I'd just like to see an update at some point in the future about where we're going.
Yeah, we might want to have a follow-up.
And, and maybe, but I don't know how we could do it between now and the end of school. But, I mean, superintendent's gonna, we're gonna have so many award ceremonies and stuff. But I do appreciate, well, we, we might could.
I am curious, and I know we may not have it right on hand at this meeting, but especially for middle and high school, because of the extracurricular things, the football, the ROTC, the band, basketball, baseball, softball, et cetera. In my mind, I was sitting and thinking, how many of those kids get into serious stuff? Now, they have their little thing, but when that coach finished, goes gassers and all that stuff, that takes care of that. But I'm, I'm, I'm just curious about, about the high school, those that are involved in Beta Club. Like, we signed so many permissions for, for out-of, out-of-state overnight trips. All of these things are great deterrents of misbehavior, and they are great, yes, for, for, oh, what do you call it?
They're part of something. They're able to stay in school. They want to belong.
And they know how they are to behave. So I'm, I'm curious about that. One last thing I'm gonna say, I, I had to go to Palatca High week before last, not as a school board representative, but as an aunt summoned by the mom. She asked me, would you go and see what was going on? So I called the teacher. And I say, you know, well, my nephew called me that night. And so the conversation went like this. Don't lie to me. Tell me the truth upfront. And then I could tell in his voice, well, I, I did. It started with lunch detention. And he didn't go to lunch detention because he claimed he was taking a makeup test in another class. Now, if you just hear that and, and, and take one side to the story, well, who wouldn't want a kid to go make up a, a math test over, over lunch detention? But I knew something else was going on. And so I, I, I met with the, one of the assistant principals. Then I, I met with the coach, and I called the teacher, and she said, when, when you get time, I'll talk with your kids that are in here now. And I say, I just want to hear what did? She said, he did, he didn't come. So he hasn't talked to her in a, in a minute. Now, but the dean, because of what he had done, he did not get to play in a crucial game, a crucial game wherein if we had lost that basketball game, we would have been out of it. But Coach Oxendine has a way of, of dealing with things. He, and, and he made him sit, uh huh, he made him sit and watch and drool and everything. And so that's what we have to do. But he has a relationship with them. And, and you're not gonna get away with it because you are a, one of the star athletes. And so this, this helps our kids to see the, the John Doe that may feel like they're nobody. If they'll punish him.
Well, a lot, a lot of the ones, what you're talking about, the kids that are in, whether it's band or even it's in the musicals and theater and all that, those kids usually aren't the ones that are causing those problems.
Right. And so drop out of detention. That was the term I was looking for.
That's why you have picked the kids that have the most discipline issues and put them in a class with an Oxendine, with a Pickens, with a good, that's gonna build a positive relationship where the kid doesn't want to do wrong. They have a reason to do good. The Hope Squad's the same reason. They're building a relationship with those counselors, those mental wellness counselors, Stephanie and Joel, they don't want to miss. They want to make them, and they will do those extra things. But you have to teach them how to do those kind of things. And it, you have to have consequences. If we, I wouldn't be standing here today if we didn't have consequences. You know, if there's not a hammer there that's gonna make you do right or wrong, then.
And, and like the Bible says, he who is without sin, let him cast the first stone. But the thing is, when I fall short, correct my behavior. But still, too, we can't stop the educational process from happening.
You gotta get them out of those classes.
You know, teaching and, and, and learning.
But we would like to, you know, figure out a way to keep them from continuing with that.
Well, I bet you no other board in state's talking about this right now. So we're doing, we're doing really good. This is a very important thing. And those Gilead kids have been playing tricks on me for years, so I don't doubt what they do. They make me go buy them ice cream.
Oh, we got an hour before next week.
Rick, I guess Jane said sometime in April, maybe, maybe a follow-up and.
Before our busy, busy, busy season.
That would be the time.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And I, I, that, that's this Saturday at Browning Pierce. This Saturday. I don't think. And one of y'all have agreed to serve on that committee? Think I'm, I'm gonna be anywhere.
I'm not, I'm doing.
It's not necessary, but we'd be glad to have a board member.
I think it would be great to have one of them.
They can pick whoever they want.
Pick who you want. And the one you call, that will be.
I didn't see that, Jane.
We'll do it. The one you call, pick. Seriously, pick, and, and we'll be there.
Let me think about that.
No, no, I don't mean now. No, no, I didn't mean now, but call.
They're all straw.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Rick, thanks for, for all you've done to get us further where these statistics do look good.
Thanks to Mr. Hestrom and Mr. Bowlin for their work.
Andy and Thomas, all of you guys, and ladies, I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Can I add, Mr. Modo?
One other little thing.
Sure.
Um, there's, you know, kids can get into some stuff, but we don't have anything about vaping on our, in school. And so that's, that's definitely something that needs to be addressed.
We, we have been picking it, just like tobacco. We've been utilizing it, just like tobacco. We have jewels, those things, we haven't, and it probably will be coming up in the next that we, that we have that will, Neola will come across.
Laugh if you want. I had to go look it up. When I was reading it, I said, thank, what in the world's that?
But when we have that, when it comes up, we're treating it like tobacco.
Book of eight lounge.
See, Holly, through the consortium, where they update our policy to be congruent with state law. It doesn't mean that we can't add more discipline consequences to our school policy as long as it falls within state law.
Brain cells.
I'm festive, Gilead.
Madam Chair, yours?
Are we done? All right. And we've set a date after?
He will after.
Mr. Bowlin and then Ms. Modo will let us know when we will meet. And you will get with Reverend Mulberry, giving you respect to your title. Get with them and, 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 and let's make this thing happen. We want our teachers happy, and we want our children happy. We want a happy classroom every day and showing it. Yes. Okay. Nothing else to come before the boy? This workshop is adjourned.